Of the whole meeting first and then follow immediately after, well, probably a little break in between, will be our official board meeting. We do have a very packed agenda, so to let's just jump right in. I am calling the Board of Trustees meet Committee of the Whole Meeting this Thursday, September 30th, 2001 at 9:00 a.m. to order. We have first on the agenda is Curriculum, Student Success and Diversity. The co-chair Susan Swartz and myself. And we're going to have under this presence, under this item, a presentation by Dr. Sagai with the, excuse me, with Ms. Amy Yoder for Starfish.
Okay, well, good morning, everyone. It's kind of weird here. We can't see ourselves, but you can see us, right? Myself and Kathy.
I mean, just the resources and support that they offer institutions, this is their bread and butter. That's exactly what they're in there in the industry of student success. So I think we're going to be able to utilize the tools and resources that they have to the best of our abilities now.
Thank you. And my last question was, is it up to faculty members to decide whether or not they want to employ Starfish? Or is that something that's going to be rolled out and mandated if it would?
I believe that certain aspects of this, I'm not sure if this is contractually obligated, but faculty are asked to absolutely use Starfish. This is the vehicle in terms of reporting attendance concerns, especially the never attend. We want to make this accessible. We don't want to make this another beast of a system that becomes overwhelming. It should be simplistic. It is simplistic, but I think having kind of those open conversations so that everybody understands not just the front side, but also the backside of the system will make a huge difference.
Yeah, I think that rollout's really important because, you know, it's a tool to help them. And that's how it has to be, you know, characterized. So thank you for listening to me.
Any other questions? We're very excited. So this is good.
I'll just, I'll just make a comment, you know. Amy mentioned Michael Rio, Colleen Quinn, and the Senate Task Force really helped us focus and realize that we were under utilizing it. We weren't using it appropriately. We're really getting data out to help our students because that end of data is what it's for. So not only the Senate Task Force and Michael, but Dr. Sagai and Amy realizing that it was not placed in the right position. It was not a I R A function. So to move it back to Dean of Students and assigned counselors, the Dean of Students makes a world of difference. So I had to go into the legislature two weeks ago because the board had approved the contract extension, $65,000 per year for a two-year contract extension. And I had to be honest to the questions that were raised that we've not been using it appropriately. And they questioned the wisdom of, you know, spending $130,000 over the next two years. And I said, when used, the payback will be enormous. So I have a lot of hope and I'm already seeing the difference. Right now, Amy sort of glossed over it, but we're using it for vaccinations, for making sure our students that are here on campus are getting vaccinated. So it's got a lot of uses, but I think it's a great tool that's just not being utilized effectively by the college. So thanks, Audium and Amy. Amy's taken on this role in, while she's still the COVID queen. So she's got her hands full.
I don't know if that's the best title to give someone.
All right, Queen of COVID?
So I just, I, I remember years back as a new trustee, asking about Starfish and the utilization and the cost and I can't really even remember the response, but I know, fast forward to the last report that you guys gave where we talked about the underutilization and the mass dumping and the things like that. To see this plan is a long time coming. It's really a breath of fresh air. This plan consists of measurable outcomes. It has dates that we can, I mean, not hold you guys accountable for, but we can use to track the progress of, of the use of this very costly program. So I just want to tip my hat to all of you, Colleen, you, Amy, you, Dr. Sagai, and everyone else who has worked on this to, to make sure we are getting the best bang for our buck. I used to have a boss some time ago who said, we are, we are, we have to be good stewards of public dollars. And so when we utilize our systems to the very penny, to the very, stretch it the most we can do, I think that's a good utilization and it's very, it makes us good stewards of the, the system. And ultimately, the students will benefit from this, and that's what's most important. I just want to make one comment on just the use of data and the use of good data for improvement and measurable outcomes that, again, refreshing, refreshing for me to hear. And I don't think the board had, well, I know the board doesn't have any role in this, but I would appreciate just some updates as you go. Even if we are doing Committee of the Whole One-Two-Liner Updates Progress, that would be great. So thank you so much.
I'd be more than happy to do that, absolutely.
And Amy, the COVID King just texted me. He said also, it's very important right now for contact tracing when we have a situation with a student through Starfish will know exactly what students are in that classroom.
Absolutely. Yep. No question. I try to forget about COVID for a little while.
Find it later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing the relaunch and getting faculty excited about a way to make their work easier.
We will be happy to talk about it here. Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, thank you for that presentation. We have another presentation coming up by Dr. Sagai. This is Middle State Self-Study. And wait, wait, I just want to make sure I have everyone here. So it's Dr. Sagai, Ericson Nillens, and that's, that's it. Oh, Catherine Celesto, sorry.
Kathy Celesto, yes. Okay, well, again, just to tie back that the Starfish.
She gave her slides.
Oh, as a slide?
Bob, did you get our slides?
As Bob is putting the slides just up.
He's bringing them up.
Okay, as, as Bob is bringing the slide, just to kind of tie back to the Starfish, I think it's timely because part of what you'll hear throughout the presentation as far as Middle State, you'll see that, that data and utilizing all the services that we have to the, to the max, to the max, excuse me, to the maximum, as well as really being student focused and student centered is going to be key. So this is really timely that we are looking at Starfish in a much different lens. So really, before I begin, I just want to take the moment to, to thank the faculty and staff who've been part of the committee that started or started the, the initiative to really work on the, on the Middle State standards. But particularly what I would like to do this morning is thank Kathy Celestar and Eric Nelson for really taking, for spending tremendous time and commitment to bring the self-study to the finish line. And as everyone know, they're not done yet, but I really want to thank them really taking the lead on this with me. But it really has been an entire college effort. As probably most of us were in the meeting a couple of months ago, the idea that our self-study was ready to go, I don't think that was the case. I, I think we found later that we needed to do a lot of work, literally to the degree of almost rewriting the entire self-study. So I think it's important to put that in context, in context. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I think before, you know, I get to the, sort of the discussion about the self-study, we know that accreditation for the college is imperative, right? We know that we want to make sure that we get a STEM approval from Middle State. Our students title four, that's how we get our title four for the college transferring credit, all of those things that we need in order for us to, to be accredited, to, to, to benefit from being accredited. But before that, I think an important process and, and really a process that every college go through is the idea of self-study. And for us, the self-study is really looking at where were we, where are we, and where are we going? And those three sort of focus are critical to really for us to assess everything that we have done or we plan to do and have done, and where did we get, where did we, where are we going with those, with those focuses? So part of it is that for us to really look at the self-study process much differently so that we could see it as part of improving the college and making sure that we are looking at the things that we do really well and the things that we are challenged with, and how do we take the steps and actions to fix, to, to really address it? And really what that comes down to is our story, telling our story to the reviewers, to the peer reviewers that will come and look at our college. But prior to them physically or virtually visiting our college, they are looking at our, at our, our self-study. So we submitted our self-study draft to the, to our committee on the 15th of September. I have to say, I was very proud of it. While I know there could have been a lot more. We did so much compared to where it was to bring it. And as, as also, as most of you know, to really do a, a, a well comprehensive self-study, it takes about a year or a year and a half to do. And we were really able to do it within a month and a month, a month or so. And that, again, I want to go back to, it took the entire college led by these two faculty and myself, and certainly with the tremendous support from our interim president to get it to where it is right now with our reviewers, with our reviewers. Again, what does this mean to our stakeholders, to our students, but specifically, this is an important process to demonstrate to our students that we look at ourselves and we really analyze what we do good and what we need to improve on so that they see that that practice is done on a regular basis. For advisory boards, that's an important piece for them to know that the college have a process, a way to assess itself and to make the necessary correction or continue on some of the best practices that we have. That's an important piece, as well as to our K-12 partners, as well as to our higher institution partners. So they need to know that we are practicing in this, in this way of assessing ourselves and how we do that. Part of what we have been doing, as you know, in a very short period of time as well, is how do we prepare for the self-studying itself as well as for the visit? Again, we had a presentation, I thought it went very well during our opening in service where we were able to split the entire faculty and staff into each of the standards to be able to be familiar with it. Again, we did a lot of pre-work before that as well, send the draft to the entire college community to be able to look at it and read it and be able to, you know, assess and give us some feedback to really know, is this our story and does our story make sense, right? And so we were able to get some, some excellent feedback. I think our, our in-service went really well. We got as many people as we could at the, at the in-service. We also had an opportunity to have a, a conversation with our students through the student government. We also met with them and talked to them about the idea of what the self-study, the accreditation. And so we had a very good discussion with that group as well. We do have a plan to meet with our adjunct faculty. We cannot miss those adjunct faculty who are not able to attend our, our IS services during the day. So we do have a plan to do a webex with them, I believe, next week on a Friday afternoon and Saturday morning. We feel that's probably the best way to try to, to get to our adjunct faculty. Again, really, it's really reflecting on this idea of improving, right? It's really getting for faculty and staff and for the entire institution to talk about how do we continue to observe what we do and do a reflection and to be able to be in this idea of a continued improvement as college, as the, the trend in higher education is constantly changing, our student bodies is constantly changing. So for us, we need to really think about our practices, our data-driven information to really do the analysis that we need. Also, I think it's important that we highlight some of the good things that we're doing as a college, taking pride in what we do, but at the same time acknowledging the things that we probably either need to revise or maybe change our way of doing things. So I think those are our key things that I think we want to continue. We do have a lot of things that we do really well at the college. But again, a lot of things that we also have to challenge ourselves and see what are some of the ways that we could change those practices? Again, the self-study is also a way for us to look at, number one, to look at our strategic plan. Did we meet our strategic plan and how does that look like from the, from the current strategic plan? But also, it's going to inform us, as we all know, we are due for our new strategic plan for the college. So how do we do that? And we have our self-study is one way that's going to inform how we're going to look into building our new strategic plan for the college. I know I said a lot. Any questions or comment? Okay, so I think the other piece that I want to highlight is that using the Middle State standard as a framework for the college. We have been doing some of it, but I would argue that I think we could do a lot better. And I got to just use this quote from David Raymond, who was the Middle State Commissioner for 20, during 2014. And I think how he has framed the, the standard makes sense. And I think this is what directly or indirectly, we've kind of been talking about. So if I may just read that, standard one has a mission is our standard one. Live it with integrity, standard two, to enhance the student learning experience, standard three, and support the overall student experience, standard four. That institution access its success in achieving the mission, standard five, and engaging and planning to strengthen its resources and improve as an institution, standard six, by means of an effective governing process, standard seven. I think for us, using that as a framework or enhancing what we have been doing and using the standard and giving this as a framework to continue as a college will help us not only meet our student, but also really but also really make meet the college's mission and vision, uh, going forward. So, uh, we really want to highlight this and really live by this. Uh, and, and as I mentioned earlier, as we are realigning, reorganizing, reorganizing our, uh, institution, these are the ways that I think we're going to be able to do and really move in the, in the, in the same direction. Any comments or questions? Okay, so I am going to have Kathy talk a little bit about sort of our plan. Um, as our chairwoman indicated, time is, 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 uh, is important. Um, execution of, 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 of action item is important so that not only are we holding us, ourselves accountable, but we are also using this as a way, uh, to ensure that, uh, uh, we have, uh, act, um, measurable outcome as to our plan and, and actions.
Adium, hi, it's Jeff Stone. Just a quick interjection if I could.
Sure, please.
Do you, uh, a- anticipate or have you experienced any problems, um, as a result of the transition going on with Fabio having taken another position and having been spearheading this? I just want to get a sense for the board whether there's any issues that have been created by, by that.
Well, I would, um, uh, trustee Stone, I would submit that, uh, this issue, uh, that I referred to earlier existed while we, while, while we had the previous administration. Part of, uh, what, um, my personally that I came into was that our self-study was not where it needed to be. Uh, I have to tell you, I've, I've done self, excuse me, middle state, um, four times with a very successful outcome. And where we were as I came into the position of the interim provost, uh, we were not where we needed to be with the draft of our self-study. So, um, I would say that as a matter of fact, we are in a much better position, uh, with, uh, myself taking the lead, but with Kathy and Eric and the entire college helping, uh, where compared to if, in fact, the old administration was in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, I'll, I'll just piggyback on that. Uh, I would agree one hundred percent with Dr. Sky's assessment. The original self-study was not a very well-done document. And we would, we would have been in, uh, very deep trouble with, uh, our evaluation team. Fortunately, the visit got pushed off and we had time, uh, to get Dr. Sky in place and, uh, Kathy Celestar and Eric Neillans, who's teaching right now, that's why he's not up on the screen right now. The three of them have spent countless hours and bringing the whole college as part of the process. And you heard Dr. Sky mention students and adjunct faculty, so everyone's going to be well aware. Uh, where maybe Fabio's absence is, uh, a challenge for us is some of the data needs of the college, not so much for middle states, but the challenges of workday integrating with our systems. And Scott Ermer and his staff are stepping up. So we, we are doing the necessary workarounds and at the end of the day, we're going to be a much stronger organization.
So, on the screen right now, you see kind of our internal timeline of the work that has been done since that seven-nine date. The original self-study was due in June. So, uh, Bill just alluded to the fact that we had, um, a transition and we had a postponement of our visit. So that kind of helped quite a bit. Um, the, some of the internal struggles that Middle States was having at the time played into our success, I think, in being able to achieve, uh, a document that ECC can be proud of. On seven-nine, um, Adium called myself and Eric and, uh, we, we saw the original draft and, um, kind of dug in. Uh, we had been on the steering committee as, um, I was working on standard three with, uh, Dr. Escobar and, um, Erickson was working on standard five with Dr. Kane. And, uh, when we saw the final document, we were able to kind of identify all of the gaps in our evidence and revise the document. It's important to note that that document on seven-nine, there was a lot of work that went into that over the, the two years um, by a countless faculty and staff throughout the organization. It just really did not accurately reflect the full breadth of work that the college had accomplished in the past ten years. So this document that we have sent to Middle States really exemplifies the great work that our staff and faculty do at SUNY Erie every day. And the reason why our students should be proud to call SUNY Erie their college of choice. And throughout the time that we're continuing on, we have, um, ongoing internal communications. We're trying to make sure that all faculty and staff are understand, understand the document, understand the great work that their colleagues have been doing, that they may not have been able to see because they were, you know, doing their own work. So we're, we're trying to make sure that everyone's familiar with everything that has been going on at the college. Uh, and concurrently responding to any of the Middle States team requests for information, which they've had their document, the document since the fifteenth and it's been wiped. So hopefully they're, they're reading, digesting, and we'll, we'll hear some feedback in a few days. Next slide, please. So our, um, upcoming, just for your records, the meeting or the visit is going to be happening virtually, uh, November first through November third. Those dates, um, we were told the second and the third would be the most, uh, comprehensive in terms of meetings. And then the chair's oral exit report will be on November fourth. So the commu- college community has been asked to kind of keep those days, uh, available for any meetings that they may be requested to be in. Next slide.
Can I, can I just add, there are some board, um, possible dates that the board will need to be present as well for that. You should have those, save the dates in your, um, your calendars. And we'll have more information on that coming up.
And I just, I just, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to add, uh, as well in terms of the evidence, the data, uh, data, um, uh, uh, informed evidence that we have been collecting as a college. Uh, it's one thing to have the self-study narrative, but it's also equally important for us to have evidence of all the things that we, uh, stated on our self-study. So part of it is to ensure that our evidence, um, uh, composite is, is well organized. Um, and what I think, um, the two, Kathy and, and, um, and Eric and, uh, and, and certainly others have been helping in the process is collecting the right information, the right data. Because part of our struggle had been at the college is really making sure that we have, not only do we have a, a data, but we have accurate data and that matters. And so that's something that we've been really working hard to ensure that pieces are well in place. And we are waiting for, uh, led by our chair, uh, if there is going to be additional information that they need as, as they are going and reviewing the, the, uh, document until, uh, the actual visit.
That's a, that's a very good point, thank you. Um, one of the things that we went through extensively was matching all of our evidence to the narrative of the report and making sure that that evidence spoke to the highest caliber work that the college was doing. And exemplified all of that hard work going on, but also made sure that the narrative and the evidence were comprehensive in a way that didn't leave questions on the table for folks. They didn't have to guess what we were doing. We showed them and proved what we were doing.
Equally, uh, we identified areas of weaknesses as well, right? So we want to make sure that, as Kathy indicated, yes, we want to give what all of the best practice and all the things that we're doing really well. But it's also equally important that we as a college identify our areas of weaknesses and plan to how to deal with that. So that is another thing that we were very deliberate about to ensure that we identify. And again, our faculty and staff were great at pointing those out for us and also coming up with solution. Because part of, as you know, with middle state, uh, in any accreditation is what is the plan and what is the action steps that the college needs to take, uh, once they identify that there is an issue. So we equally did that to balance, uh, some of the challenges that we have as a college.
Just on those dates, just a reminder, this is virtual, they, they will not be here. Eleven-one is a Monday. Traditionally, they start on a Sunday night. This eleven-one will probably be a Monday afternoon, Monday evening virtual. And then the meat of the visit will be the second and the third. And then I have a private meeting with the chair, Dr. Edwards, Thursday morning. And then he reports out to the entire college community following my individual meeting, uh, the fourth, Thursday, the fourth.
Thank you. Next slide, Bob. So the self-study report provides the college and all of our constituents with a synopsis of the development and the execution of SUNY Erie Exels, our current strategic plan, and how well we were functioning at attaining all of our targets. The self-study report that, this was a quote that we had from our self-study report, um, that we see this report as a springboard for our next strategic plan because it identified opportunities for advancement for the college. Um, and one of the questions that did come up, um, in one of our first conversations with Dr. Edwards was just to kind of clarify where we were in the strategic plan process, since it was evident in the report that the strategic plan was, um, coming to its end of its life cycle. Next slide.
Sure. So, uh, part of what, as we were, and again, going back to the importance of the, of the entire process of self-study is to find a way to identify how do we move forward and take some of those, uh, informations. So our next step, uh, is really for the preparation for our strategic plan for the college for 2022. Um, and these are some of possible strategy. I know we have, uh, a committee that is led by, uh, uh, trustee, um, Todd, uh, with regards to the strategic plan. Uh, so these are some of the possibilities that we're thinking. Campus survey to gain college understanding of our current strategic plan. Strategic plan committee with, uh, with trustee Todd is where I think we need to have this discussion. Um, we really want to make sure that our entire college community understand and see the importance of our strategic plan and following and living with that. That ties, uh, directly to our mission and vision of the college. So, uh, that is, uh, our next step in terms of where we are going, building off the middle state and then moving into our strategic plan for the college for 2022.
And one of the things that was found when we were kind of writing standard one, which is mission and goals, and the, the in-service that we had, um, back at the beginning of September was a, a general lack of understanding of the structure of SUNY Erie Exels across all, all facets of the college. It was a very complex strategic plan that did not lead to an intuitive understanding of how everyone's role really influences and helps support the achievement of our targets in that plan.
And, and that ties back to, uh, as, as we talked many times about the unit, uh, assessment that each area focuses on and making sure that again, that maps exactly to the strategic plan of the college overall as well as tying back to the mission and vision. And so again, through our self-study, we were able to uncover that these are areas of opportunity and really look as to the benchmark that we have for our, uh, divisions to really focus when it comes down to the, uh, unit of areas that, um, of the areas perspective. So, uh, it is a very, um, healthy document for us to, to really use our self-study. Um, and we are really looking forward to from our, uh, chairs, uh, our, um, middle state chairs and team to give us some really good insights so that we can really use that as a way to really build out the future of the college.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for your work and, and moving us forward on this. Um, on, from a board's perspective, you hear, um, you hear a lot of talk of the middle states being, this, this middle states tying into the, the, uh, new strategic plan that we have to develop, which I am hopeful that we will work on with staff, um, in February, uh, at a retreat that we have to set a date for. But we really want to make sure that we dig into this middle states, uh, report and be involved of this process because it, it really will drive the strategic planning, um, of the next four or five years or three to five, however long we decide to do it with SUNY Exels. They, SUNY Exels, at least for my, from my viewpoint, has always been like a standalone document. And every now and again, it was referenced and every now, I mean, but there were really, I never saw the, the measurable outcomes from what was presented to us. And I think this is an opportunity for us to pause and relook and, and really make this a robust strategic plan that will live on throughout, you know, our trusteeship or what have you. And we could, um, work on a policy level to help support the work that the faculty and staff are trying to do within, um, um, this. And then one day get under, underneath this, I, I called it in convocation, is four-letter word of middle state. And it's not something that we should be afraid of or worried about. This is something that we look forward to because we're, we know that we're doing everything according to our strategic plan. So it, it won't be, it won't be an issue. So, and so I'm just, again, same as starfish, just really happy about the, the progress in, of, of middle state, of the work that you have done. I know you guys said you wrote, rewrote this in a matter of months. So I tip my hat to you, both Kathy and Eric, and then Dr. Sky for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
I, I would say, although the self-study is reflective of, of the college and we feel good about the document, I personally do have a concern with standard six, and that's on, uh, institutional resources, strengthening an organization. That's like you had up there before. Uh, we still have some financial challenges. Yes, they're greatly improved, but, uh, we still have financial challenges. So in my view of reading the document, if we are going to have any kind of criticism, it's going to be in that area. And that's certainly something that we're working to improve upon, but there is some vulnerability in my mind in that area.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other comments regarding this presentation? Hearing none. Thank you both. Or I, I think Eric is not here, but thank you again. Okay. So we do have a, a few action items for submission to the Board of Trustee agendas. There's eight listed here. I won't read them through, but you see them. I'm going to ask for Bill to just give us a, or whomever that needs to, give us a summary of the agenda items listed, the actual items, it blended, listed, excuse me.
I'm actually gonna, uh, ask Dr. Sky to go quickly through one to seven, uh, just highlight. You don't have to address each and every one. And then, uh, Jason Perry, being a student at North Campus, will address item number eight, the student activity fees. So, Adium?
Sure, sure. Um, okay, real quick, in terms of the, um, um, amendment to the advanced study, particularly with the, uh, both, uh, district, um, this amendment is really asking, uh, the board to approve uh, that we wanted to offer it to the entire district where the previous, um, agreement was, uh, strictly just for the, uh, uh, technical side of the, of the, of the district, but we would like to offer it, uh, to the entire district. Uh, and I'm happy to say that we have been really working aggressively with the district and they've been very supportive. Uh, currently, uh, they have a, a, a culture and linguistic, uh, respond, um, a project that the district is really have been involved, uh, that we are part of. Uh, we have nine courses that we're offering specifically African-American literature and African-American history. Uh, that is, um, in nine, in, um, I'm sorry, in five different schools. Uh, and specifically what I really think this is a, a, a really advantage at this point for us as a college is that we really are working with their, with their seniors. Uh, part of the, the, the goal here is really to engage, uh, the seniors. Um, as, uh, most of us know, typically, once you get into the senior years, you don't have as many classes as if you stay on track. So these are seniors that need to be in the school. Um, and so, uh, the district wanted to do something that is very creative, very engaging. And so the district wanted to do something that is very creative, very engaging. And our two courses really lend themselves perfectly with the district. So we're, we are very excited. I want to thank the faculty that have really worked hard, specifically led by Patty Kaiser, to really make this work. So I think we're doing really well with that, with that agreement. The next one is also really looking at the K-12. We are working with K-12 public, but also the charter school. So Maritime Charter School is a new school for us in terms of partnership. So we're asking to create a partnership with them. So we're asking the board to approve this as well. And with the Maritime, we are focusing on the junior and senior students, particularly in the business and public services is really where we are trying to focus on that. And similar to a project that we've been focusing with the Buffalo Public District, we are doing the same thing with the Maritime Charter School. As you know, the last time we did the Applied Technology Charter School with the health track and the mechatronic track, we are serving about 300 juniors and seniors with the charter school. So very excited to bring in the charter school in this conversation. We're working with Lakewana District. As a matter of fact, we met with them yesterday. They have the same thing. They want to engage their seniors. Seniors are leaving a little bit early, so they want to do the same approach. So they're looking to see what we could do in terms to engage their seniors. So we're very excited about working with the Lakewana District. Kenton, also, we met with. They're also looking to do the same type of approach in that project. And then Cleve Hill is another one that we are waiting to meet and to do the same kind of approach with that, with that district as well. We are looking to be creative with other K-12. As you know, COVID had brought a lot of things with homeschoolings and other things. So we are doing additional research on how we could also capture those students who, as you know, homeschooling has raised a lot more COVID, but there's other initiatives that as well. So we're looking to then be as creative as possible to really strengthen the whole K-12 student population. Any questions or anything I can answer on the K-12?
Dr. Sky, just a comment. On both the first two programs, the first two items you're discussing, we're waiving the one-third tuition payment, which is good to encourage participation. That doesn't really affect our bottom line that much, does it? I mean, it tracks, it tracks revenue in other areas, right?
Right. We generate, the students are, those accredited courses, Mr. Lenahan, so we generate theoretically FTE state aid. We're waiving the tuition. The big carrot at the end of the line for us is that those students ultimately should matriculate full-time to ECC. Then we'll have the full tuition and the state aid. But this gets them transcripted credit that can be brought anywhere. But ultimately, our goal is to capture those students and bring them to ECC. As Adium said, Lakewana, free and reduced lunch program. We can offer no tuition to those students. And as I reported out like three or four months ago, Ken War now is showing, Kenton School District now has more students going to Niagara County Community College. So it's a double help for us. It helps the county lessen the chargebacks, but then ultimately it helps our college too. So these initiatives are very important. Cleve Hill is a free and reduced lunch program.
No, that's not that. But eventually, it actually will increase our bottom line, protecting a broader student base.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And then the other side, I call this whole project, the K-12 and the partnership, SUNY Success Project, because I think these are very successful initiatives that our college is really engaging in. It's the North Town Agreement, where we are working with the North Town to have our CECO program be offered at the site. Again, we are anticipating about 12 students to be there. And this agreement is really, we are providing faculty, but they are really providing the space and the equipment and the facility. And more, more importantly is that our students are going to be in the facility, really being hands-on. So this is another initiative and excited about getting our students to be part of the North Town family in terms of really being there. And the North Town group is really supporting us in creating and using the facility, as well as supporting us with their, with their equipment. Any questions on that?
They are allowing us free of charge to use their facility, brand-new dealership that's just in the process of being completed, along with a classroom. And the CECO component that Adium mentioned is the co-op program modeled after Westher, working the dealership, come-to-class, or vice versa. So it's been a very effective model for Westher, and North Town wants to replicate it. And again, kudos to the faculty of Vehicle Tech Training Center for really stepping up and looking outside their own walls to see how we can best address the needs of the community.
Any questions on that? Okay. Pathway to success, this is just really renewing our contract. We have been doing really good with Pathway. We have about 189 new students that came through the program to our College of Hall enrollment. So our number are looking very well. We are looking to perhaps, perhaps expand a lot of our present. I believe we have about 26 location that we participate. Part of that is really targeting the new immigrants that are coming to Buffalo. Myself, Jase Justin, and Phil Strubel met yesterday to really find a time to, arrange a time to meet with the Catholic Charity Executive Team, as well as Journey Anne, to really talk through how we really could serve, particularly the new immigrants. But we have 26 location that our college is there to do ESL program, as well as college preparatory courses, to really get more students to come to our college.
I'd just make a suggestion. I know that consortium of organizations that are working with new Americans refugees, funding is going through Jewish Family Services. So if you're talking to Catholic charities, you might want to talk to Jewish Family Services.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much. Any questions on the pathway? And then the last one is the workforce investment. Again, this is a renewal contract that, that we are presenting for approval, led by Denise Raymond. Also, another opportunity for us to really work much closely, much intentionally, with her team and with her group, to really get our students, to get students from that program to be able to matriculate into the college. And myself and Denise are meeting on a regular basis, how we could really even increase our enrollment from that program. It's a very great opportunity for us. It is at the college, so we have a great opportunity to even reach further students, particularly the adult learner. The other one for approval, so forgive me, this is kind of new for me to do all these things. So the Police Academy, the Fire Range, that's another one as well that we have in here for your approval. It is, again, to support our students. As you see, a sort of trend with all of these, is really to support and increase our recruitment effort, enrollment effort, as well as to really make sure that our students are having the best experience, but also really highlighting the fact that we are present in the Western New York, right? Our community, our college is really present, and we are delivering education at the different location to support our students.
Just on that, it's, don't think that we're allowing students to go to the fire range.
Yeah.
This is part of the Police Academy, Law Enforcement Training Academy. So just to clarify, we're not promoting that. This is for sworn officers only that are going through the Police Basic Training Course. So it's a limited number of students that are going there.
Thank you, President Ruder, for clarifying, because I see more of them looking at me over there. So and then, and then we have the clinic, the phlebotomy. We are asking to extend our present in terms of having an opportunity to have our students do their internship. This also is with the new project, trustee Todd, that we've been working with, the 1199 Union. And out of that, student, currently, we have nine students that are participating in our phlebotomy program led by Dave Sylvia. I know I see Dave there. And we are doing really well with the students. We have a total of 12 students. And by allowing us to have an extension, an extension internship site like The Quest will allow for us to even further enroll in the phlebotomy program and allowing our students to have hands-on experience with that program. We are using micro-credential as well for those individuals who are already in the field, but they need the skill set. So we are, this is, micro-credential is our first one for phlebotomy. That was, again, led by Dave Sylvia. So that is in place, and this is the request for approval for this one.
Did you need to go through number eight, student activity fee, Jason?
Yeah, absolutely. So in anticipation of kind of the drop in enrollment, we went with a very conservative estimate of dropping our anticipated reduction in fees by 10%. We, two big changes from last year to this year were that we eliminated the merit line and collapsed it into the opportunity programs. We were finding that we were doing internal transfers from that line to opportunity programs. We wanted to make it more equitable for all of the opportunity programs to have access to that funding. So we simply, the excess balance was transferred to the excess fee restricted reserve account, and kind of merit was combined with OPS. Based on being fully operational with three centers, childcare went back to its traditional funding percentage. And we, at this point, with what we're anticipating, look like we're going to come in okay on our overall total. So I want, were there any questions about the student activity fee?
Is Travis on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Travis, just making sure that you were there as this directly impacts students.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I was here for the committee meetings, and so were the other SGA presidents.
That's all I have to report.
Thank you. I just need to add that I'm super excited about all of the initiatives happening through, at the K through 12 level. There was some, a sentiment at one point that our bread and butter is a non-traditional student, and we needed to just focus on them. And I would say, well, what about the high school students? There are still high school students and people out there. And so by offering them these courses and such is amazing. There's also a huge disparity, as many of you know, in a lot of the schools, mostly the urban schools, where they're not offered advanced placement courses or IB courses. Especially in the charter schools, they're just not offered them. Some aren't even offered, you know, chemistry or things, you know, things that would be required for certain engineering programs or health profession programs to get into college programs. So if we can potentially fill that gap at a junior or senior level for these schools, that would be, or I would say for these schools, but mostly for those students, that would be a great bridge for them in order to, you know, get an early start on their academics, because they should be offered those courses, and we have the ability to do so. So I just want to say thank you, thank you for that.
I will say, though, you know, the bread and butter you mentioned, actually, four of the agenda items, two are hitting the non-traditional and two are hitting the K through 12. The one stop is for dislocated workers. The pathway contracts are for non-traditional students that we're trying to get them through into the college and then through the two K through 12. So we're continuing that blend wherever students are and where the needs are. We're out there and we're going hard getting those students.
Awesome. Thank you. So if there's no other questions, item one through eight will be moved forward to the Board of Trustees' consent agenda for approval this afternoon.
So moved?
Perfect. I don't, I don't. This morning, oh, right. I don't, it's, I'm not sure what time it is anymore. Okay. So, thank you, thank you, Chandler, then. I don't think we need to take a formal vote on these to move them forward, but I appreciate you.
Okay.
Moving. The next up is the talent management. Chair Swartz is not able to be here today. The talent management agenda is on page 24. I am going to ask that Tracy and Bill take this on? Just kind of go through it for us?
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Kind of have a light agenda today in terms of the talent management agenda. We're creating, section one, a request to board create, we're creating, asking approval to create three positions. One would be for Arda, the very first one, which is a comptroller position, which would be an SES position. The other two are positions, current employees have been reassigned. Peter was working with the COVID team, and he's been reassigned back to athletics as a Director of Athletic Operations. So that would be his title. And then Amy, who was in the marketing department, has been reassigned to enrollment management as a recruitment specialist. So we're asking approval to create these three positions for these employees. Under section two, leave of absence, we have three employees that have requested and the faculty fed approve their leave of absence. One for one year and the other two for two years. Understanding as Mark is now, she's going to be a department head, so she's requesting a leave of absence from her instructor position. And Stephanie, as well, is going to be, is going to be an instructor, so she's requesting a leave of absence from her, her technical assistant position. And with Bridget, I believe there were some childcare issues, so she's requesting a leave for one year. I don't, any questions on any of that so far? If not, the next question?
Wait, I would just mention a couple things on, we are creating a comptroller position. Arda, Arda Plana is our chief accountant right now. We had two people that were in the finance area, both SES positions, that had left the college. So Arda will be promoted as an interim comptroller, and we are advertising to replace her. We certainly need a lot of assistance, as the board is well aware. Josh Sager continues to assist us, but we need to transition away from Josh Sager dependence to make sure that for our near and long-term future that we have a good, robust, and well-qualified finance staff. So this would be an internal promotion, and we are currently advertising to backfill the chief account position. And the funding for that position is coming from the two vacancies.
Great. Thank you so much, Brandon. No, thank you, Brandon.
Thank President Ruder for truly allowing me to have this opportunity. I know it's been, the past two years have been quite challenging for the college, but I'm truly inspired by everyone and all the contributions that everyone makes here. I truly think that we function as one, and I look forward to putting the best practices for the college and always having that vision that, that we are one and we will, we will overcome all the challenges that we are currently facing. And yes, I'm very thankful that I have the opportunity to work with Jar Sager from SUNY and as we transition away from him and we backfill the position of a chief accountant, and I have a lot more support within my department. So I just wanted to thank you all for this.
You are welcome. It's well deserved, Arda.
She will be at our policy meeting Thursday afternoon, because she drafted her first manager of policy, so she'll be waiting for you.
Don't believe everything they say.
Yeah. Okay, and then finally, on section, section three, which is emeritus, we have seven individuals that applied for emeritus status. Six of our FFVCC members are. Six are FFVCC members or, and one is administrator of Paul Amara, Mr. President Biden, emeritus status. And that is pretty much the agenda.
If I could.
Yeah, let's go.
I could say a couple of things on the emeritus. I did some quick math today and total years of service for the seven individuals combined 272 years. So following page 24, you're going to see the pages 25 to 44, the position justification that's required for the creation of the three positions. And then pages 45 to 99 are all the letters of support and recommendations for the emeritus recommended awardees. And then we actually included on page 100, the current board policies, so you didn't have to look what the policy is on emeritus. Then I think on page 102 or 103, there's actually a listing, or page 111, I'm sorry, there's a listing of every emeritus awardee in the history of the college. It's a, it's a nice look, look see at all, all the staff that have been recognized by emeritus status.
All right, thank you so much. I don't see any questions at all? If not.
So I just want to say again, thank you, Tracy. Thank you for having all the documents needed to, to, for justification of all of these. I know that has been something that we have always looked for, so everything seemed to be in order. It was funny because I'm like, how did we jump from 30, 24 to 100?
That's powerful.
But it is well deserves and if you guys look on page 111, John Dana, Paul Lamanna, who is the most un-retired retired person.
Exactly.
And I know.
Change is law.
Eileen Fufas, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Dr. Roy Pippon, Kathleen Powers McGriff, Marie Schmidt and Mary Lee Seitz. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Just want to say congratulations and thank you for your years of service.
Absolutely. A lot of years of service there.
Also for board information, we have the, on page 114, human resources personnel transaction report. Well, it starts on page 14.
I'll just briefly mention, there's a lot of appointments. Most are part-time, but just to summarize, there are three new full-time positions. There are 11 positions with new job titles, there are limited promotions, most are lateral transfers. And then we have 20 retirements, resignations, workforce reduction. So we continue to reduce the number of staff at the college in line with our enrollment and our finances. We continue to work very effectively with the unions on trying to reallocate, redeploy staff. It still sometimes presents challenges, but we're trying to use the resources that we have in the most effective manner. We've moved a couple of people, Kerry Khan, Mark Ober into positions that are, their talents are much more effectively being used and we will continue to look at how, when we realign the college, we continue to look at opportunities to redeploy.
I know we're going to go over this a little bit more probably in the budget, but I just want to bring up again for the minute, Bill, you, we have a bottom line dollar amount that we have, you've talked about instituting and not going over for personnel. And do we have that dollar amount? Where are we in that?
We are, as of yesterday afternoon, we have, we started the budget year, just like the facility master plan you're going to hear about, it's a point in time. So when the budget was adopted back in early June, we budgeted 30 vacancy, 30 vacant positions with a dollar value attached, 1,530,000. As of yesterday afternoon, we have 29 vacant positions with a dollar value of 2,123,000. So we actually have added to that vacancy reserve, which is a positive step. So we continue to try to save as much as far as personnel. I think year-to-date spend on payroll compared to the prior year, we're down 5.4, 5.5 million dollars. I have the exact figure in my notes, but we continue to try to streamline our staff at this institution.
Perfect. Thank you. So with that being said, thank you, Tracy. We are.
You're welcome.
Moving on to budget and audit, Chair Jeff Stone.
Thanks, Dame. Bill, since I am in the car, I have the materials, but could go through your report on the, under the budget item, please?
Sure. The first item is actually a presentation. We have a Sarah Mochter, an associate with JMZ Architect and Planners, that is going to take us through a brief PowerPoint. As the board knows, the facility and academic master plan has been a long work in progress. I believe they started in September of 2018 and they were planning releasing a final report back in February of 20. And we all know what happened at the end of February and early March of 20, COVID hit us and so essentially went dark for about a year. I've re-engaged them, they've made another presentation to the board since that time, they've done multiple presentations. And this is, the presentation Sarah's going to go through is a very high-level facility and academic master plan. We transmitted to the board and we'll have it on the portal, the actual like comprehensive document, it's like 62, 63 pages, but Sarah was just going to take us through that high level to look at. Again, as I mentioned earlier, with the budget and the personnel, this is at a point in time. Things change, circumstances change. This is at a point in time and it's a plan. It's not set in stone, we can pivot, we can change. It's going to make some assumptions about South Campus. Nothing has been determined, nothing's been formalized, but there are some recommendations coming out of the facility master plan and we're hoping to put a little more meat on the facility and academic master plan through a process that we're hoping to engage, doing a deep dive on our academic program. And so with that, Sarah, I will turn it over to you for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you. Let me share screen. Okay, get the slideshow version up. I'm Sarah Mochter, I'm joining you from JMZ Architects and Planners, Franklin's Falls. And my colleague, Jeanne Stark, and I started this process with you way back before COVID. And this is the final presentation to show you the options for the three campuses that will give you the tools that you need to modernize facilities and also increase your operating efficiency over the next 10 years. Throughout the time that we've been working on this report, we've accomplished many tasks. I'll highlight a few of them. We went through an instructional space utilization assessment to look at how your classrooms and class labs are being used and if we could find efficiencies. We looked at an existing conditions assessment, which you probably remember from past presentations, had a great deal of detail on the conditions of your buildings and what the most needed improvements are for modernization. And our space audit is an important process too, in which we went through every space on the campus, checked to see whether its designation was correct and how, how that would affect our space needs calculations. Overall, at a very high level, facilities improvements, we found that the city campus was in your, in the best condition of all three of your campuses. North was in fair and South was in fair to poor condition. North and South had quite a great deal of, high level, not high level, sort of high need areas, right? Mechanical systems, electrical systems and site improvements. We looked at space optimization, trying to figure out how to right-size the instructional spaces and offices that you have, make sure that they have the right capacity. And then also to look that your facilities are in the right configuration and have the right features. And those would be things such as your student support facilities, your libraries, things that might need an update that would then in turn help promote student and institutional success, creating a collegiate environment and making sure that students have the resources they need and the places they need them. It is a changing environment and in this past COVID time, we've certainly all experienced that and our plan has adapted with the college and will continue to adapt with you as you move through upcoming plans, changes in demographics and enrollment, more COVID challenges as that hopefully results in the funding limitations that we know you deal with. And so we've created a plan that has a few components, but one of the really most valuable ones to you is your facilities maintenance project list. We have, we have line items of facilities maintenance projects and a suggested timeline for them that can be collaboratively worked on with the county department of public works to make sure that the facilities are modernized and they will be able to serve you for the next decade and far beyond that also. We, our investigations in the past, the space audit and the utilization study showed that you have enough space and capacity to accommodate all kinds of different changes. You have an firm to do swing space, to take a building offline and renovate it. And then if you had changes in delivery methods, you have the space that you need to accommodate The plan for North Campus really focuses on facilities modernization and upgrades and then creating a collegiate environment that will help with attraction and retention. We're looking at improvements to Drive Memorial Library. Can I, can you see my cursor here as I circle?
Yes.
Looking at Drive Memorial Library. It has facilities needs, but it really, it also has functional needs. It's a, it's a library that was built to house books, but we want to create a dynamic environment for students to gather, study, and, you know, linger longer, stay on campus and enjoy themselves and, and get their work done. And so we're looking at improvements at Drive Memorial Library. And then similarly to the Spring Student Center, we have a dining hall here and a student lounge that need upgrades to be more attractive and collegiate in appearance and to support the students in their meetings, their clubs and their recreation. And those two facilities focus, or they front on what we're calling the oval. And then if there's also a bit of a pedestrian boulevard here. And I want to thank our sort of peers at Wendell Architects and Engineers for preparing this concept diagram for us. Working on the site and improving it to create some functional program areas, gathering spaces, outdoor study and device charging stations, things like that will really add vibrancy to the campus. And so the town of Amherst has worked with Wendell to, to prepare these concept diagrams and sort of advance the idea. So all the different buildings would get the facilities upgrades and modernization that, that we've talked about, but these, the functional changes would be the library, the Spring Student Center, and then the site upgrades.
And Sarah.
Yes.
Although not, if you can go back one slide, please.
Yes.
Although not labeled, the lower left, you see a red outline.
Yes.
That is a potential new building slash student housing. And why I say suggest student housing, county executive mentioned that in a meeting I had with him and supervisor from the town of Amherst. So again, this is a plan, there's options, but there is room there on that lower left. And as Sarah said, Wendell Associates helped craft this, but this part was really JMZ's thoughts and ideas and they just put it more into picture form where they're going to do some 3D renderings and modeling, because the ultimate goal by the foundation is actually to try to get some corporate support to develop these projects. This one and then the next slide that Sarah's going to show.
Yes, this next slide shows a really exciting development for the athletic fields that are on the north part of the campus. Now, JMZ had identified the need to upgrade the Bell Athletic Center, add a field house and provide some updated playing fields. And then the town of Amherst elaborated on that with Wendell to, to create a real community resource. And that would be a really terrific addition to the campus because that would bring the community more on the campus. Everybody would have an excellent impression of these facilities and they would become introduced to the college and sound like a really great idea all around. And so the concept here would be a new field house that would have a competitive athletics areas and community athletics areas surrounding it and some new buildings up here, community resources for events and gathering.
I, I will say in our discussions with the county executive, he was not, not thrilled by this, pointing out that we have many needs at the college, this is not a dying need. And I do agree with him, the plan, the foundation really sponsored this feasibility study and there's a resolution in your agenda to obtain state reimbursement for one half the cost of the feasibility study. But they engaged Wendell along with town of Amherst and the Amherst Chamber of Congress to come up with this concept. Town of Amherst is willing to commit resources to the project. And again, the foundation is going to launch a fundraising campaign and look at ways to fund projects. That new field house would be probably the last component, that's a big price tag. And by doing a multi-purpose stadium, we would have lockers under the bleachers and that would allow us to house all our outdoor athletic teams that currently operate out of South Campus to come to North Campus. We continue to have the Bell Center there and the rest is really field development, college slash community use. And it's exciting project. There's a lot of, you know, balls up in the air still that have to be figured out, but it's, this is a concept that we'd like to see if it can bear some fruit.
I would just also add that this could not have been accomplished without Bill's involvement and work with the town of Amherst. And as we're looking forward, you know, talking about strategic planning, talking about realignment of South Campus, what, what things will have to be shifted or realigned. The sports program alone was, is, is something major that we have to look at. And I like this specific rendering to bring sports, some of the athletic programs, the football and such, to city, to north, excuse me, because it alleviates two, two huge barriers that, that the existing team has to deal with. One, transportation, two, housing. There's much more housing opportunities, even if we don't do student housing, there's many more housing opportunities by North Campus. And also transportation, if they're not using our college shuttles or what have you, this is also on, you know, close, it's easier to get to on the tran, on public transportation. So to me, this is a win-win, this is a win for the community, for our students, our college and also the community surrounding North Campus. We, Bill says it a lot and I completely, and agree with him, we should be the community's college. We should not have closed doors to the community, the communities around us. So I just wanted to add that.
And to your point, Katrina reported yesterday that I believe we have 33 ECC students staying at Legent Village Apartments and we're going to have the inner campus shuttle go through there. Jason Perry emailed me yesterday about entering into a, a contract with them, that's something we want to have a discussion about. So that's exactly right, the housing is more available there, it makes sense to house our teams, we'll still maintain the indoor teams downtown at the Flickin' Your Athletics Center, men's, women's basketball, volleyball and our swimming program. But this gives us an opportunity and really creates a campus feel versus a stark landscape right now that is not appealing for potential students coming.
Bill, I just wanted to say we have students living at Legent Village.
How many? Eighty?
How many?
Eighty.
Oh, I thought I read 33.
Eighty students overall.
Okay. Thank you, Katrina.
This is Jeff.
A good correction.
Jeff. That's encouraging. Jeff. Just a comment to follow up on what Dame, Dame said, sorry if there's an echo here, it's Jeff. there's an echo here. It's Jeff.
There have been two community conversations that have been going on. One is with respect to our South Campus and our need to reflect our decline in enrollment since, you know, 2010 that we've all been talking about. And the other has to do with the development of a new stadium for the Buffalo Bills. And both of these conversations surround our decision-making at South Campus and college-wide. So I think it is important, I think, for J M Z, please, to take note, to the extent you haven't already, of these community conversations about the location of the new Bills stadium. Since we met in June, there's, I think, emerged a fairly strong consensus that the new stadium will be developed in Orchard Park across Abbott Road from the current stadium, that is closer to Erie Community College South Campus. And what effect that will have on our facilities there, the county's use of those facilities, possible purchase of those facilities and so forth, all should be factored into the thinking. And I like the idea of creating an athletic campus at North, because I think it gives us more flexibility and makes us more light on our feet with respect to South Campus. Because I think, you know, we've got that big, big elephant of the stadium situation, and what will exactly happen out there is still a little mysterious, but I would like to be light on our feet with respect to South. And one way to help achieve that is to make sure that we have a good, solid plan for outside athletics at North. So I will stop there.
I will just say, Jeff, to add a little text to your comment, we are not privy to any conversations involving the Buffalo Bills. What we know is what we read in the paper, so we have no idea what the plans are. This makes sense for, even if the Bills were not in any kind of discussion, to house all our student athletes in one location out at North Campus for what the chairwoman said as far as housing opportunities. The nice thing about this plan is several of the fields would be turf and lit. So the men's soccer coach reached out to me. He actually is the gentleman that did these designs. He works for Wendell full-time, but he's our men's soccer coach. He let me know that our fields at South Campus, because of the rain, were unplayable, so they had to cancel a game. With turf, that's not the situation. So I think it makes a lot of sense to go in this direction regardless of any kind of discussion, any kind of narrative involving the Buffalo Bills. This just makes sense.
I do agree, and I just want to make clear for everyone, my comments are based not in any inside information either, just reading what we're all reading in the Buffalo news about the state of the negotiations and the apparent trend toward the location of the stadium near our South Campus. So none of that's been decided. It's a very delicate negotiation, but it is, from, you know, just reading all the public reports, that seems to be where the team wants to do it. And we'll see if the county and the state join them in that decision.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sarah, keep on going.
Okay. Looking at the city campus, we have similar charges on all three buildings to repair and improve building envelopes and address deferred maintenance and improve accessibility. And some of those projects are already underway with the assistance and coordination of the Department of Public Works and the county. Modernizing building systems is an important part of this plan on all three campuses also. So the picture we see here is the existing 45 Oak Street building, which has nursing and instructional facilities in there, and also has some One Stop Student Center-type activities and the Workforce Development Department offices, along with other services. We propose to renovate it comprehensively and create a downtown school of nursing that would have nursing, radiation therapy, simulation labs, classrooms and labs, faculty offices, and student space. And within it, we'd also create the, we'd expand the One Stop Student Services Center. And that would be your students' first stop, and they would go there for things, admissions, financial aid, and the things that a new student needs to do to sort of set up their life as a SUNY Erie student. And then following that, the student success organizations that help them with their studies and their retention, those things would be co-located all in 121 Ellicott Street. And that sort of keeps everything in a convenient location and also stops some of the duplication of resources. So that, for example, the office has one central copy, one central file area, and things of that nature that start to keep things being more convenient, becomes a more efficient use of space. We call it defragmenting here. I don't know if you remember having to defrag your computer years ago. It's sort of the same idea. And we would also create a modern learning commons in 121 Ellicott Street. You have a nice library space there that is a good size, but we'd want to create some more of that vibrant community space for study that students are asking for these days. And then we would enhance the streetscape surrounding 45 Oak Street by changing the facade of the building, adding some shade and some outdoor seating over against some landscape improvements. At South Campus, and as we heard from our just recent discussion, there are some real challenges there based on the facility's condition and the enrollment and the demand for instruction. And that brought up to us as architects and planners the possibility that some of South Campus could be decommissioned, and the campus could still remain lively and serve your needs very well without the use of buildings four and five. Four and five include really large spaces, auditoriums, the very generously sized library, dining facilities. And those things could be consolidated to create a new part of campus in building two. And that is this one here, where we have the existing facilities include the auto-body shops, and then art and drafting facility, drafting instruction there also. So those instructional, it would still have some instructional role, but also would take on this role as a new part of campus with some meeting space, a cafe or vending area, a smaller resource center and library. Campus five, we'd be looking at facilities, maintenance projects for accessibility, operational efficiencies, and user comfort. But we would really be focusing on improving the buildings that will stay in use, and then letting four and five wait for future use or decommissioning, or maybe being used by some other entity, not necessarily SUNY Erie. So we'd like to reduce the college's footprint there to save on maintenance and operating costs. Any questions or comments on that?
My comment is to remind everyone watching and to share with everybody that's not watching, this is not a done deal. This is a plan. These are recommendations. They have to be thoroughly evaluated, thoroughly vetted, look at cost benefit. So there's a lot of work. This is just a concept. It's not a done deal. So please, don't go, if you're located in building four and five, go and look for a new office. It's not happening today or tomorrow, but there will be a thorough process that vets the recommendations, and the recommendations could change. We could look at bringing the police academy from North Campus to South Campus, and they would be in building six. So there's a lot of moving parts. This is not a done deal.
It's a very dynamic plan. And the space that is available to the college on North Campus and South Campus specifically, there is sufficient space for you to interpret these guidelines many different ways. The Vehicle Technology Training Center, again, has come up in other parts of this meeting. There are lots of possibilities going on and many ways to accomplish a comprehensive and modernized VTTC. The space should be updated and have expanded instructional labs, update the offices, and then bring in auto-body to make a comprehensive facility. But there are lots of different paths to get there. There's property available adjacent to the existing VTTC, there are partnerships with industry groups, and then there's always a possibility that you could renovate and expand within your existing facilities. Embedded instruction in new dealerships is an exciting possibility. And then maybe some new facilities downtown and in other parts of the county. There are a lot of options here for the VTTC. When we prepared the report, it, you know, was in the past, and so we looked at renovating the existing facility and applied the cost to that. But I understand that there are lots of ways that you might advance your VTTC program.
To your point is to, if you could just go back one slide, Sarah, to your point about the Vehicle Tech Training Center, you heard a presentation by Dr. Sky, Northtown Automotive. That is a program right now, the co-op with Wesher is running out of the Vehicle Tech Training Center. There's no more capacity there, so that's why the co-op will be cited there. We have met with Wesher recently, Wesher Auto at the Northland. They're looking to put a automotive certificate program either in Northland and/or somewhere else in the city. So we are trying to look at opportunities for this academic program to be throughout the county, not just in one location. And then if we're able to combine auto-body, the natural alignment, then would be to put welding, which is a high-demand career right now, career and industry. So there's a lot of opportunities, and I give, you know, it was Adia, who was the dean of technologies, who was in charge, and now it's Joanne Kummerhour, and the staff. Adia, myself, and Joanne met with the staff this past week, and thanked them, and thanked them for being creative and looking outside the box. And it's probably our largest academic, like, non-general studies program at South Campus, even though it's not right on South Campus.
Good. Ready for the next slide, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So here we can talk about the estimate of probable cost for the project, and I'll walk you through a little bit of what is already underway and what is already planned and funded. You see along the left side, we show funding category as underway, planned, funded, or planned and not funded. Then we see project initiated by, Department of Public Works has taken on a lot of the accessibility, building code, and deferred maintenance work, and that is already underway and is being worked on for about $5.5 million 2021. It'll probably continue out into 2022. But those projects are being worked on, and the money is committed. And that's across all three campuses. And we're talking about things like sidewalk repairs, upgrades to toilet rooms, and making sure that all of the buildings are ADA accessible, and improving, just really improving the whole baseline level of quality on the campuses. Now, projects that are planned and funded also initiated by DPW include deferred maintenance projects that are more specific, such as the building cladding, masonry, and tiles on city campus that need to be repaired, the city campus skylight, 121 Ellicott Street, and let's say some building envelope improvements such as windows and doors and things at North Campus. So things that are more specific for one particular building would get into this category, and those have in our report line item lists and a suggested timeline to coordinate with DPW to get those underway. Now, the ones that are planned and not funded, it's a...
Sarah, before you go, not funded, just, so accessibility, ADA, we have made significant improvements at both North and City Campus. City Campus, all the restrooms have been renovated, made ADA-compliant floors one through four. They still have to do the fifth floor. They redid the ramp outside on Swan Street to make that ADA-compliant. They're doing work at North Campus, restrooms ADA-compliance. And under that deferred maintenance, there's items like the clay tile needs replacement here at City Campus. So those are the type of projects, board members have been downtown, but there's still scaffolding around City Campus because of the clay tiles and those tiles coming off the roof. So there's a lot of deferred maintenance. There's emergency generators that have been installed at the campuses, so there's been a lot of work. I give a lot of credit to Department of Public Works. They have done a great job moving these projects forward. We're trying to clean out the old dollars that have been allocated before we start asking for more. County Executive, in his budget that has not yet been released, is identifying $2 million for the clay tile project here, and $3 million for facility master plan, phase one implementation. That's 50/50. One half comes from the county, the other half comes from the state and Bureau.
They've been great partners with the implementation, you know, even before the report was finished. They've just, they've been on it because we were able to issue the facility's conditions, you know, quite a long time ago. And they picked right up on that and got to work. So I've been grateful for their cooperation on compiling this list and helping us put together the timeline and the costs. As we look at this next group of plans not funded, it's a large dollar amount, and it includes folding a lot of the deferred maintenance into building renovations. So when we were looking at the project site plans earlier, North Campus, South Campus, City Campus, and you saw the individual buildings, and there's a line over on the right side that said deferred maintenance. And those are things that would then get folded in when we do a building renovation. So you could imagine that this line here of new construction, renovation, and site landscape would be phased and timed to also include major upgrades to building electrical systems, mechanical systems, plumbing upgrades. If there were to be any exterior reconfiguration, then the roots would go at that time. You know, a lot of, these are the ones that you would consider to be a major renovation or a construction project, and that's the type of thing you're looking at when you are considering this large sum of the $257 million. So over time, you'll be working one by one on the deferred maintenance projects to get these essential projects done, to modernize your buildings, and make them ready for your next, you know, 50 years of operation. And then functional improvements will be blended in to accomplish these planned, not funded, future projects. So your grand total for the master plan is over $284 million.
That is over 10 years, just to make sure everyone's aware. That's not a next year.
And then even at the end of the master plan, you know, it's very rare that anyone completes their full master plan. So even toward the end, you take a look at what you didn't accomplish, you roll it into your future plans and see, you know, because certainly things will have changed by then. Some of them may get taken care of in another way. Some of them may just be as relevant in the future. And that's what the plan looks like. So I'm ready for any questions or comments.
So the cost of the renovation, site landscape, and new construction, with the partnership with the town of Amherst, some of those can be offset, correct?
Some of them may be offset, some of the site landscape and the athletics-type ones, and it would all depend on your phasing also. An important thing to remember in this is that it's $2,021, not accounting for escalation, you know, as things, as inflation progresses, the cost of labor changes, that's going to affect the timing also. But your partnership with the county and any funds that come in from federal government could help offset some of these.
Yeah, these are just project costs. It's up to us to figure out how to access those dollars, as long as we package it as a college-county project. It gets state aid, so the local share is one half of these amounts, but it's still a significant local share. And I think there's a newfound enthusiasm by Mark Allen and the foundation. They are bound and determined to do those site improvements at North Campus and the athletic field development where there's no county cost involved, and that's their goal.
Thank you so much to the foundation. They have been doing an amazing job. Mark and Christopher, I don't know if they can, we'll hear this, but thank you so much. My other question is, and this could be in the larger report that you provided, but are there items that need to be done before something else could be done?
Oh, absolutely. You know, that'd be nice. So you got a...
Yes. The enabling the project...
Just one second. I think we need to put someone on mute.
Oh, he just put him on.
Okay, okay.
So we did account for some of the what-ifs, and that's part of creating a dynamic plan that you can sort of implement as your resources come together. So things could happen earlier or later depending on what other projects move forward. So if the Center for Nursing downtown were to move forward quickly and early, then that unlocks the possibility for other projects to go, and that is... unlocks the possibility for other projects to go and that is described in, in the detailed report. So similarly, if you were able to build the Field House earlier rather than later, then that would influence how you ultimately decide to use South Campus in the future and whether all of those buildings would stay online or maybe be partially decommissioned. So those things are described in the report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, very much. Thanks for jumping on. Say hi to Jean for us.
I serve my life.
And you guys, you are the best. I, James is, is awesome.
Thank you. It is a pleasure working with you and so as always, we will be available for, you know, any questions that you might have moving forward and thanks for, thanks, just thanks. I like working with you all. Have a great day.
And vice versa.
Thank you.
Jeff, I know you are driving, so I will just go through quickly the action items and be open to any questions. First action item is a T-Mobile lease agreement. They are adding a, some equipment to their existing footprint and they are offering an increase in the rent by $250 per month. Right now, we have Sprint, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T at our South Campus cell tower and Verizon North Campus. We generate approximately $127,000 annually in cell tower income. So by adding the new generator, we need a board resolution and the county will have to sign off on it. So there is a request to approve the amendment, the fourth amendment. They have been at the cell tower since 2006, originally a five-year contract with five, five-year extensions. We have the second item for lease extension, similarly naming at the Vehicle Tech Training Center since 2006. And the way we were able to build the extension out at Vehicle Tech Training Center was the leasehold improvements that we made have been amortized by this lease for. So we get $75,000 annually through this lease and just as important as the income we get is the number of students that get trained. And Ford used to send their employees outside the county, outside the region for the training. So they're able to keep those training dollars and employees local and bring in employees for training outside there. So it's a, it's a win-win. This is just an extension and it just requires my approval and the county attorney approval, who she has already approved at Leslie. The next action item, disposal of materials. We have one item that's fully depreciated at South Campus that is requested to be disposed of. The county actually then does the auction to get rid of the material and then any proceeds go back to the college. And then item number four, I'm requesting establishment of capital project. It requires the board's approval, would go to the county for their approval and ultimately to the SUNY Office of Capital Facilities. It would not be part of the state budget since there are dollars, unallocated dollars that have already been borrowed for by the state, $1.1 million that's available. This is the Amherst, the foundation launched a feasibility study. Sarah showed you the window renderings that are coming out of that feasibility study. So I'm trying to get the match of the feasibility study cost that the foundation is funding, no county dollars involved whatsoever and the reimbursement would go back to the foundation to redeploy those dollars elsewhere. It's a small cost, $18,000, but my feeling is if I can get $9,000 reimbursement in funds for the foundation, I think it makes the whole sense to the world. And then the final items for board approval is I'm asking the board to accept and approve the facility master plan. It's really something that we want to include in our evidence file for our self-study report that this process has been going on since 2018, that the board has seen it, been briefed on it multiple times and that this is a final resolution that we can include and put in our evidence folder, that the process has been completed. It's a requirement, they have a facility and academic master plan and this fulfills that responsibility for middle stage and helps obviously guide us into the future. Those are all board approval items as part of the board meeting. Any questions on any of those items?
Does it need to be said in this resolution that while we're accepting and approving it, we recognize again that, you know, it's not a done deal? Some kind of language there to assuage those who might think that this is the be all and end all?
That would certainly not impact anything whatsoever, Kate. I think that would be a very friendly amendment to the resolution as part of the board meeting if you could put something together. Again, there's a lot of rumors, I'm attending the administrative association meeting tonight because there's rumors that South is imminently closing. So that, that would certainly go a long way to reaffirming that it's a planned point in time, much work needs to still be done. So Jeff, I'm going to keep on going. I'm going to ask Sue Holdaway to do the ASC update and then shift to the foundation updates.
Good morning, everybody. Been about five months since I gave you my second quarter report. A lot has happened since then. Auxiliary services continue to provide services, childcare food service and our fiduciary business office services throughout all of 2021, albeit in a reduced capacity to coincide with the majority of the campus population being remote. I pursued every loan opportunity we had available to us through the SBA and also sought out every potential credit that we could apply for because of our reduced operations. Some of the key takeaways from the reports that are on page 132 and 133 are that we have now been forgiven for our first PPP loan. We have, we started that application forgiveness process in June and because KeyBank had some programming issues, it took a couple of months for them to get us through, but we were forgiven July 27th and then the SBA repaid KeyBank in August. So that 300 and just about $305,000 will be able to be recognized in our 2021 fiscal year. We did apply for a second PPP loan for the spring semester and we will be applying for that soon as our 24-week period on that is just about expired mid-September. And we received notice on the 27th of September that KeyBank was starting to accept forgiveness applications on that. Another big takeaway is that childcare is being recognized nationally as an industry that does need significant support. There is federal grants called childcare stabilization grants that we were able to take advantage of and that is providing about $197,000 worth of funding that we have until September of 2023 to use. And we plan to use that for subsidizing a living wage for our childcare staff. And lastly, it's not on this report, but we did work back in June with Tony DeLassio and grants. We collaborated with him on our sixth round of C-Campus grant funding. We had five prior successful cycles applied for through Mike Begain. This was Tony's first federal grant, so Brenda Fight from City Childcare and I worked with him and we just received notification that we are getting our sixth round of funding for the next four years, another $275,000 for the City Childcare students. Cafeterias are back in operation at City and North. Our sales are not quite what we expected at North. We're actually doing better business at City. And then we did close the cafeteria at South. We replaced that with a micro market, which is more of a convenience, self-service type store and that has been successful in the first month of its operation. And that is no operating expense for auxiliary services. So we were able to take that loss out of our financial picture. That being said, we do expect that we will most likely have zero use of fund balance for 2021. Any comments or questions?
No, congratulations on getting your, your forgive, I know you were waiting a while for that.
Yes, thank you.
And C-Campus grant, that's very significant. Great job, great job to you, your staff and to Tony DeLassio. Sue, just, just reminding the board, no food service, no bookstore at South Campus. Is childcare functional and operational at South Campus?
Yes, it is. We have about 17 children enrolled in the South Campus Center for the fall and, and we do have food service in, in, in the form of the market. It serves fresh food items, there's frozen items. It is just a self-service convenience store concept. And the bookstore at South is serviced out of the bookstore at North and we have not had any issues with that.
What are your enrollment numbers at North and City Campus of childcare?
Uh, North Campus has 30 children enrolled and City has about 21.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sue, this is Joanne Comerhour. I'm the dean for liberal arts and engineering and tech. I'm located at South. I, I just want to kind of speak up on behalf of the students at South and say that that market at South is not often, it's not often stocked the way it should be, in my opinion. It's empty, we have empty coolers, there's nobody down there cleaning the cafeteria. I go down there pretty frequently to check it out. The cafeteria is dark, there's no lights on, there's, there's creamer all over the counters. I took a video of the coolers, they were empty. So I just really felt like I needed to speak up. I try not to in these meetings, but as far as South Campus and that market, I, we have a lot of students at South and there is very little for them in that market. So I guess I just wanted the board to, to know that I, I would not call it, I don't know, up to par for what I think our students should have. So I just wanted to speak up on it. I don't know if you have comments or if there's any way someone can be down there to clean it or turn the lights on or something.
Joanne, I had asked you, you mentioned this to me for the first time the other day and I asked you to send me those concerns so I could address them with Sue. So I'm a little disappointed you didn't address that before.
Yeah, sorry about that, Bill. I will send that to you in an email. I apologize for that. That is my fault, I should have sent it to you directly, but I will now.
Joanne, if I could just address some of those issues.
Okay.
Right, right now, we have security opening the garage door for the market and I can ask them if they can turn the cafeteria lights on at the same time. In terms of the cleaning, it was supposed to be checked on a regular basis by housekeeping and then the market people come in and stock the market several times a week based on the usage. I have already spoken to them about the lack of some of the fresh food items. They are adjusting their production, they had to wait to see what was being sold, they didn't want to overproduce and end up having to throw it away. And then some of the other empty items are due to national shortages, for example juices and things that, I, I don't know if you realize, but there's Pepsi shortages all over, they can't get drivers, they can't get product. So it's a bigger issue than just the market, they can only stock what they have. When I, when I asked about the, I did the same thing, I took pictures and sent them into the market coordinator and he had mentioned that as a corporation, they had ordered 2,300 cases of beverages and only received 1,000 of them from Pepsi. But he was going to ramp up the stocking of the fresh food items. They're, they're basically doing inventory on a regular basis, they do inventory weekly and then they stock based on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Foundation, I'm not sure, I think Christopher is on vacation. Was Chris, were you?
Yes, so I'm here and actually our treasurer, Jay Kinkade, is here as well and he was going to talk about the financials and then I'll address the other reports. So Jay, and if possible, if Bob could bring up those reports on the screen, it might be helpful for Jay.
He can just go through real quickly in the meantime.
Yeah, I'll just go through it real quick, Bill. So we just completed our fiscal year, our audit has begun. I don't anticipate any significant changes to these numbers. Our net for the year excess of revenue over expenses is going to be about $994,000. Don't expect major changes to that, but within that, a couple of key takeaways. Our contribution to special event revenue was down compared to last year and budget. Special events largely impacted by the pandemic. Contributions mostly by the fact we changed the year and it took Christopher a while to get up to speed. However, it's already in full, Christopher has applied for some grants, we have applied for before, we've had positive feedback on it. So I believe contribution to revenue is going to be up significantly this year. Christopher also put, uh, the Shep Dearing event, which was in the right spot on the special event side, sold out in, and so just foundation. But the reason we're up about a million dollars over the revenue expenses primarily due to our investment results. We got about $130,000 in interest dividend income and a million dollars in unrealized and realized gains, so we're performing very well. One thing that we did institute was because investments are a big part of the foundation and just a reminder, the foundation is a nonprofit, subject to the rules of financial accounting standards board, where the college I think is subject to governmental standards board, so we have a little more leeway with investments and marketable securities. But we did put in effect a investment committee, so some committee for the finance committee to manage investments closely and work with the investment advisor, you know, to make sure we've got the right balance of growth and risk management. So that's a pretty significant change from the foundation. Other than that, we are taking a more active role in owning, and, 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 and changing. So our investment portfolio definitely saved us and made it a very positive year. That's really the highlight of the summer, Bill.
Thank you, Jay. Chris, were you going to add anything, Christopher?
Not to the financial piece, I was just going to talk briefly then regarding the donations. As, as you know, we've had an awful lot of activity when it comes to our grant writing, working with the college, working with the foundation. And when it comes to donations, that our would-be funders look at the level of commitment made by our boards at the school, at the foundation, and we have nearly 100% participation in both, which is actually an improvement. And so I really want to congratulate everyone for their efforts and their support in, in that endeavor. So the, the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'll keep it brief because I realize we're, we're over on time here, the last report is our goals and metrics for the year. I'll try and hit the highlights. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to take those as well. We have 10 different goals. First one is to increase revenue to our high-cost departments by 3% annually. These are departments with a budget of $100,000 or more. We have several different areas in student services. We continued with our athletics rise up campaign, which raised an additional $1,000, 7,600 for the total campaign. We also, the foundation took over as fiscal administrator for the Moms Emergency Fund, which is through the Western New York Women's Foundation, Moms Moving Our Mothers to Education and Employment Program, which was $6,000. Secured additional funding and got our first major donor for our Student Emergency Fund, which raised a total of $15,500. In our Human Resources, Student Affairs, Equity and Diversity portion, we secured a $10,000 grant from the Bank of America for the SUNY Erie Technology Loan Program and that supports hotspots and laptops for...
Program, and that supports hotspots and laptops for students. Also during the year, there was the holiday quarantine event. Proceeds from that event and additional donations are supporting the Wi-Fi hotspots and other technology needs for our SUNY Erie students, which totaled nearly nine thousand dollars. Our health sciences area and nursing program, the endowment was able to fund over software for student testing, case study program, participation and remediation, simulation and virtual classes and exam software, which was a almost seventy-two thousand dollar benefit to the program, to our students, to the faculty. And then lastly, for this area, automotive technology, we secured a twenty-six thousand dollar gift from West Kerr, which helped to paint the entire exterior of the Vehicle Technology Training Center, which was in need of attention. So in total, this year, we raised almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars for our high-cost departments. The prior year was two hundred and five, so we didn't make as much as we did the prior year. Of course, we all know there were challenges regarding COVID and other challenges, just in changes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the report. But all in all, we're looking for an improved year for 2022. I'll go again quickly. Goal two was to increase revenue from events at SUNY Erie. We had our Chef Darian event, which raised twelve thousand. We had our golf tournament, which raised thirty-eight thousand. We do anticipate some more events with Chef Darian, and we had some other small activities. So the result was, given the pandemic and the inability to hold on-campus events and fundraisers in twenty, or in year twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-one, it was a step in the right direction. So in twenty-two, we do plan to have a much more robust fundraising calendar with more events either on or off campus, you know, depending on COVID protocols and guidance from SUNY. Our third goal is an increase in our faculty and staff involvement in community organizations by three percent annually. Connecting faculty expertise with community business needs, trying to understand the community organizational board and volunteering needs, and connecting parties within the college community. So the foundation has partnered with college program staff. Example is a mechatronics and auto tech area, and sports service staff, our career services, introducing them to business and industry so we could provide opportunities for partnership, and that's an ongoing collaborative efforts. So the result was at present, the goal falls outside of the general purview of the foundation, and this is due to the changes in 2020 to the operating agreement with SUNY Erie. At the time, the strategic decision was made by SUNY Erie and the foundation board to change the staffing structure and reorientation of the foundation. So presently, the foundation is engaging current and retired faculty as volunteers to help, they've already helped in fundraising for a few of our events, and but it's not limited to those events that we mentioned above. So in 2022, these goals will be updated to reflect the strategic goals as outlined in the amended operating agreement, and there'll be more on that. And Christopher, where we talk about that in future meetings. Goal number four is to increase faculty and staff giving. So we have a few different areas. Our Giving Tuesday every year, we seek support specifically from faculty and staff. We did see a small seven point five percent decrease over prior year. We did raise over nine thousand dollars. Continued giving from employee support through our student in need grant was almost two thousand dollars. This is staff specific support, and we do get support through payroll deduction, and that raised thirty-three hundred last year. So prior year, we were at fourteen thousand fifty-six dollars. This year, we were up slightly at fourteen thousand three twenty-four. So we see an increase there, and we will continue to seek faculty and staff support. Goal number five is to establish a multi-year financial plan. The foundation is building a plan to incorporate the capital campaign efforts, as you talked about, for the North Campus in 2021 and beyond. So the result is a five-year strategic plan that was developed for Erie Community College, the foundation in 22. However, in light of the recent development for capital needs at North Campus, the plan will be updated and will be reflecting these changes and these needs and goals. Goal number six was to increase our annual fundraising by twenty percent, and we looked at a three-year average from September of 2015 to 2018, and we did very well, and this is the three-year average. So we did eight hundred and thirty-two thousand the first year, nine hundred and seventeen thousand this past year, again, due to some of the challenges, to the pandemic and whatnot, we are at four hundred and eighteen thousand, and that was also due to, you know, staff changeover, leadership changes, the continued health crisis we talked about. But we are looking for a much improved 21, 22 year. So we did meet two of the three years, and we're going to continue to move forward on And goal number seven is to add a new facility naming rights agreement. So during the pandemic, efforts toward donors onsite for solicitation obviously was curtailed, couldn't get those types of activities going on. So the efforts have already been ramped up at Citi with discussions for donors for partnerships and potential naming rights sponsorships. Goal number eight ties to scholarship. We're looking for recipient rates of two percent per year increase. When we look at our student headcount for fall of nineteen and fall of twenty, we were at ten thousand three thirty-two in nineteen, we were at eighty-three sixty-one headcount for twenty. Our total applications, we can see it's gone up from four hundred and sixty to five hundred and seventy-one, and our submissions have gone up, and even the, those that didn't get completed, those drafts went up. So we're getting outreach, but what we're finding, the unique students that have been receiving rewards went from a hundred and eighty-six to a hundred and two, and we also recognize that as a percentage of the student body, we went from one point eight percent to one point two-two percent. So what we're doing to address these issues is on the student-focused area and on the donor-focused area. So we're working with financial aid to make sure that we're getting the word out about scholarships. We're working with our counselors to promote the scholarships. We are willing and able to sit in classrooms, put note and put our grassroots efforts together. We are, matter of fact, in late August, the foundation was part of the orientation at the Northland Training Center, SUNY Erie Student Event, where we did precisely that. We actually walked students through, we introduced to them the opportunities and walked them through the process, and we're willing to do that at any point in time. We're using the student email, all student email access to students, to leverage that email system as opportunities become available. We are presenting them, so that does help drive registration. And this year, for opening of the fall semester, we had a table of swag outside our foundation office, where we had pamphlets and other items to encourage application and engagement. Items that we're working on for donor-focused.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the interest of time.
Yes.
The trustees, the full report is found in your packet. If you read through it and have any questions, please reach out to me. I just, I'm sensitive to losing quarrel, Chris.
Okay, I apologize. One last note, if I could, I think the last one is very important, which is that, you know, the foundation is looking to move to be minimally supported by the college, and as you can see with the moves that have happened, we're doing just that thing, and I'm glad to see that happening. And interim president, Ruda, I appreciate the effort that you and the board have had to help us in that effort. So thank you very much.
And I will say the foundation, our relationship has improved one hundred percent, and Christopher and Chris and then Tony DeLassio, those guys knocked off six applications to foundations for funding to help fund our planned realignment study. And to date, we have commitments from four foundations, two more to come. Oshai did commit a hundred and forty thousand dollars to fund year one of that study with the caveat that we had to get a hundred and forty thousand dollars from other foundations, and the ECC Foundation stepped up with a twenty-five thousand dollar commitment. So thanks for what the foundation does. This is truly what a foundation is supposed to do at a community college. So thank you. Please send our best, Jay, I'm not sure if you still, Jay, you're still on it? Thank you. Please send our regards to Christopher, I think he's at Disneyland, and also your chair, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to continue. Jeff, if okay, we have the board information. Item number six is the facility rental and waivers. Really, the only waivers we've had that are not county-related to date has been Buffalo Swim Racers at the Flack Jr. Athletics Center. We are starting to ramp back more rentals now that some of the pandemic conditions have been relaxed, so we'll see more rentals. There's more activity going to start at South Campus at the TURF Indoor Training Center. As far as supply report, if you have questions, big spend on Euron, which is ramping up the closure of Workday and the work. Budget to actual, found on page one sixty-two, shows our August thirty-first preliminary closing numbers. We are recognizing a significant share of our federal cares money. As I mentioned earlier, since September first of twenty, we had spent a reduction in payroll spend of five million six hundred fifty-nine thousand. I spoke about vacancy reserves, and May twenty, we had seven hundred fifty-nine full-time positions. September twenty-one, we had six hundred and seventy-five, which is an eleven percent reduction. And again, we continue to look at ways we can realign our staff. Arda has done a great job. She'll start making adjusting journal entries in preparation for our year-end audit by Drescham Malecki. So this is an initial look-see. Starting next month, we'll run both our fiscal year 2021 numbers as well as our new fiscal year 21, 22 numbers, and share that with the board of trustees on a monthly basis. And that, Jeff, concludes sort of the highlights on the finance area.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll just add, thank you, Bill. And Jeff, I'll just add that items one through five of this list will be added to the consent agenda for approval at our board meeting. If there's no further questions, I'll move down to strategic planning and assessment. Chair Hobler, we have two items for board information, the minutes of July twenty-second, strategic planning and assessment, and also middle states.
Yeah, hi, everyone. We had our meeting July twenty-second. The meetings, as Denise suggested or said, are attached. Adyem and Kathy really covered all of the discussions that we had at the meeting, and actually more, so in great detail. And so we're going to reconvene sort of after middle state as we move forward, and so we're going to take our cue from executive staff on moving forward with putting together the next strategic plan. So the date to be announced for the next meeting.
Thank you, Chair Hobler. Next, we're, did Carrie, was she able to get her volume?
Yes, I did. I switched devices. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So we'll do technology with Chair Phillips.
Yes, and I cannot even remember when we met, but I know that Scott Ermer does have a brief update for everyone that I know everybody wants to keep up to date on the Workday announcement, so I will turn it over to him.
Good morning, everyone. And yes, it has been quite a while since we had an update on Workday, so lots been going on, but I'll try to keep it brief here. So back in February, we did go live with Phase Four. That was our largest phase for the Workday project. That was all the student records, registration, advising, and student finance. That could cut over half in February, but since then, there's been a lot of work. We've done eighty-eight integrations that we put into production. These integrations transfer data between Workday and other third-party systems. They could be as simple as just sending a file out, or in some cases, very complicated, where we're interacting in real time with a third-party system, getting transactions and writing data back into the system. So we have eighty-eight of those that have gone live since February. We have another fifty that we're still deploying right now. Almost all of them are either in their final testing phase or are in production. We're just monitoring for a few weeks. And then there's six that we have in active development that should be finished by the end of October. So immigration work is, you know, a lot going on. It's very complicated. Some of the ones that I want to highlight are pretty much all of the financial aid, are very intricate integrations, you know, HASTAP, Excelsior, Degree Verify, all the COD stuff. You know, there were some issues once we put those in production, but most of those have all been worked through. Financially, there's a huge one, you know, funds are being dispersed to the students. Starfish was one of those integrations, the SUNY Serus reporting, the library system, bookstore credit. Those are all in production at the moment. Phase Five, which was student financials, that went live June twenty-eighth. This was transferring all the bank data, and students now paying all their bills out of Workday instead of colleague. So that went live on a Monday. Students were making payments online by eight AM that day. Cashiers were taking payments at the windows Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning. We did go through a number of growing pains with that new MilNet cashiering system. There was forty-six issues that we had logged since that had gone live, but they had all been resolved, most of them very shortly after implementation. So still working on a few issues with miscellaneous payments, like taking a transcript fee or adding print funds to student accounts. Those are just a manual process right now. On Monday of this week, we actually picked off our Phase Six implementation of all the historical data conversion. That is scheduled to, for the first part of that, to wrap up this Friday or over the weekend. We are converting two hundred and fifty-eight thousand student records and over three-point-six million course registrations for all those historical students. So, you know, it's a very time-consuming process of getting all that data out of colleague, formatting it specifically how Workday wants it, validating the data once it goes into our testing tenants, and then before loading it into production. So that's all happening as we speak. Next week, there's a few other conversions that are happening in place, educational test scores, placement testing data, and there's a small load of nine hundred returning student historical data that's coming in next week as well. There were some other smaller projects running concurrently with that phase, things like configuring transcripts, the graduation process, course placement that I mentioned, and then faculty load reports on how to pay faculty for the courses they're teaching, that integrated with payroll. So those are all wrapping up by next week. Still doing a lot of learning sessions. ITS runs Workday on Wednesday. You know, some of the academic and functional departments run training sessions on a weekly basis as well. So still educating the entire community about the features and functions on Workday. Few concerns that we still have, you know, reporting has sort of been always an issue through this project. You know, IRAP currently had some drastic staff reductions in the last two weeks. Currently meeting with Dr. Sagai on a plan forward on how to keep that reporting moving forward. Some of your concerns, you know, a lot of the staff are, and functions are single-threaded, only a single individual has the knowledge, so there hasn't been a whole lot of cross-training at the moment. Once implementation phase wraps up here, that's really a main concern of all these departments, to really cross-train and spread the knowledge and document all our processes and procedures to keep moving forward. And then just some additional note, was there a question? Yep. Just some additional notes. You know, we did have to move some of the integrations and business processes to post-production, which we're calling rolling adoption. You know, as we've gone through the implementation, new functionality has come out from Workday. You know, we've sort of, businesses have expressed reasons to sort of change how they're functioning and doing their processes. So we've already identified eighty-eight major projects for post-production work. So probably in our next governance group meeting in November, we're going to be prioritizing that list. You know, and that's going to be, you know, another huge undertaking for the college to implement, but, you know, we are nearing the end of the implementation phase. It's been a huge effort the past four years by, you know, all the ITS staff, all the functional areas. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work, their long hours, their nights and weekends, you know, in implementing Workday. Still a significant amount of work to do in the future here.
Scott, I think your beard is getting a little grayer.
I think it has too. On the one side, I'm going to have to, you know, do something about that.
But I just want to thank you for that update, and also to join you in thanking the staff who has been committed to this process. And I know you have been working very hard to just keep all the balls in the air and making sure that we are moving forward, and so I just want to just say thank you again to you and your staff for your time, work, and dedication.
No, thank you. It was definitely a team effort and an entire college effort to get this completed.
I will echo the chairwoman's remarks, Scott, and you mentioned late night. I have a text response from you at eight oh nine last night, so we're all on call twenty-four seven, so thanks, Scott.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
So last, we have marketing. Chair Linehan.
Yes, Denise. The marketing committee met often over the summer to enhance our enrollment. I don't know if Phil Scrubel is on the call, if he wants to give us any update.
Sure. Yeah, a lot of the meeting in the year over the summer was to push students for registration. We really did a kind of coordinated effort to maximize our advisement days and open registration. The last two, the last advisement day and last open registration, we saw a significant amount of students come on campus to register. Open registration over that two-day period, we saw close to seven hundred students. That was the focus, and then from shifting gears from there, obviously, it was kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach across all the enrollment divisions to really push everyone rowing in the same direction for the fall start. I want to thank all the enrollment directors, you know, Paula Sandy, you know, the counseling chairs, you know, everybody really worked, and they gave everything they had to get to where we are. I don't think we would be as far as we are if it wasn't for all those individuals working together. It was a very challenging year, especially with the Workday, with the whole brand-new system thrown on top, trying to figure out how to get students through the new system. So, you know, if you see any of the enrollment directors, you see, you know, Paula, the counseling staff, really please give them a pat on the back. I've never seen a group work so hard. You know, obviously, you know, we're still adding students right now. Obviously, our advanced studies has been doing fantastic job adding students. We're going to have to wait and see where things shake out with the COVID vaccine students, but we are hopeful that we're going to get close to this budget.
Yeah, I just want to condemn, commend Phil, not condemn, but commend.
It feels like a bit of time, I'm kidding.
The entire enrollment team, Phil, has done just a tremendous job of pulling people together during extremely difficult circumstances, all the COVID, you know, restrictions and issues that arose during that period. Nonetheless, I just think we should recognize Phil and his committee for just the tremendous efforts that were put forth to keep us competitive. So thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Phil, for all of your work and your role as, this was new to you as well. So I just want to commend you and your team, all of those that you have, who you have named. And also, I don't mean to be the gray cloud, but you know what question I'm going to ask, right? Student orientation? I know, Dr. Sagai, you responded to an email that I did have, and maybe you have a little bit, a little update for the rest of the trustees, is for just to remind everyone, in October of last year, we started this conversation, and we realized we had a contract upwards of eighty thousand dollars to, with a company to implement the student orientation. And so I have just been keeping this on the forefront, making sure that, again, being a good steward of public dollars, that we are utilizing the services that we paid for and making sure that the student benefits at the end. So, Dr. Sagai, if you can just update the board of where we are with that?
Sure, sure. So part of the orientation is really also the realignment of the academic student affairs I mentioned earlier. It's under the Student Success Framework umbrella. It's also under the leadership of Amy Yoder. We did make some changes with staff. We did bring the staff. That was in another area, too, really, of the orientation. Just with respect to the software, last, the fall cohort did go through the Blackboard orientation. They did not participate in the new software, which is, I know that is something that is a college we set out to do. Unfortunately, we did not meet that timeline. However, we are taking some data from the Blackboard and making sure that those students give us their response and see if there's anything that we could do right now to address any of their concern. And then we are looking forward to, we did set up a schedule to train the new staff that is going to be taken over orientation. So that staff is being trained to do the new software. We are also making some changes to the information in the new software to really realign some of the new things that we have in place, and really just modifying it. So we are on track to put that in place for the spring cohort, for new students. So we're working on that. We will have a comprehensive plan for orientation, but not only for orientation, for that Student Success Framework that I was talking about, because as we know it, orientation does not end, you know, once students come in, right? So it is that pre-enrollment kind of concept, and then as they are enrolling, what does that look like? And then as they are coming into our college, what does that look like as well? But then really moving on into, once they come to the college, what are some of the phases that we need to implement to make sure that particularly the first year is a positive experience? As we know it, research tells us over and over again, it's within that first year, first semester, that our students decide whether they're going to stay with us or exit out, and a large part of that is how we orient our students to come into place. The other thing I just want to add, we do do a lot of programmatic orientation, so that is one of the things that we're collecting data on, to see what we do and what that looks like. So do we complement our college orientation with that? So we are in the process of gathering that information. Again, we want to be efficient. We want to make sure that our students see our orientation to be meaningful, not just another checkoff for the college or for them. So we really want to be deliberate. So we are planning that. We are going to do something for current students to make sure that they didn't miss a beat, but certainly ready and prepared to launch this program in for the spring enrollment of new students.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sagai.
You're welcome.
That being the last item, it is eleven forty-two, and we are going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Now, normally, I would probably say we should take a break. However...